Well, it's been, but we're gonna move on from our agenda. We appreciate everybody once again coming down to the seat. We're gonna move to the administrative side. He had a motion, some of Mr. Wilkinson, have a second?
Oh, sir.
Ms. Curry, second. Ms. Lewis.
Okay, I agree. School volunteers who on occasion may also serve as best chaperones or provide for education for students too, and for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided first private vehicle liability insurance and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, an agreement with Kathy Lovejoy to provide transportation for a student at Hart Street KIA for the 2014-2015 school year according to the terms of the agreement. Item C, a revised salary schedule number seventeen effective immediately. Item D, out of state travel for the following employees. Uh, to Madison in Kentucky, November 13th, 15th, 2014, to attend the best robotics event. No funds needed. Tim Alliak to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, December 18th, 19th, 2014, to attend the best robotics event. No funds needed. Item E, adoption of a revised job description for special education director. Why not small?
Okay, question to your board members. Have a question on either side.
I just have a question on item B. What, having not been on the board that long, what were the changes to the job description for the special education director?
Uh, okay, um, I'll give you a little history. Um, as you all know, uh, Mr. Daxnia, who had been our special education director for, uh, probably around thirty years, let's say, there was a, uh, a job description that the board had approved in nineteen ninety-five. And then when he retired, he had developed a job description, uh, that was utilized with, uh, Mr. Dennis Snyder was, um, hired in to replace him. And then after, um, one year, uh, Mr. Snyder was, uh, leaving and we just used that same job description to post for Mr. Jeremy Brunnie. And for some reason, as many times, um, when we've abolished positions before, they'd been an error, whether it was on a custodian, uh, or a job, uh, for a professional for a, um, qualification. So when we, um, looked, we had left off the word preferred for the administrative part. We just, uh, wanted to be able to put that word back on, and so we abolished that one and, uh, added the word preferred.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. You alluded to several job descriptions being used to hire in different special ed directors. What is the last job description approved by the Board of Education?
I guess it was in nineteen ninety-five.
So those other job descriptions were never really approved before?
Not the local board, but...
Well, that, my question is, the last job description approved by the Board of Education?
Well, in here, when Mrs. Powell did her research, it's nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, 'cause I take the position that the Board of Education has to approve job descriptions for every position there is. Uh, no position can be posted that varies from that job description. So, and I realize what you're saying is like, when the state was in here, they may have had their own rules and put job descriptions out there that, uh, weren't approved of the local board, but, um, when we look at all the job descriptions that are, you know, oftentimes we don't actually see the job description. We just, uh, they're mentioned in posted job descriptions, whatever. But, once again, uh, I firmly believe that the Board of Education must approve a job description before it can be posted. Otherwise, the administration, and I'm not saying they're anyone, would have leeway to post any type of job in any manner they wanted, and that's the board's responsibility to establish the criteria for all jobs. So, 'cause this is an issue here now. Mr. Baker asked a question. How does this job description vary? And, you know, I really don't know exactly, uh, all the differences, but I'll tell you one thing that, um, and I think one thing you'd like to have added is the word preferred on administrative degree.
Well, as it progressed from, uh, the, uh, original one in nineteen ninety-five, uh, administrative degree was not even mentioned. As you often, you know, and I have popped here to like to view it.
Okay, well, let me just finish then I'll work on. The reason I say that is because I think administrative degree is referred, is required. Um, in order to evaluate staff, the administrator must be able to evaluate the personnel that work for him, and the special ed director has numerous professional staff that work for him. In order to, uh, evaluate th- those staff, that administrator, the special ed director, should or must, in my opinion, have a, uh, administrative degree. So I think the administrative degree portion is not something that should be preferred but required. To support that, I offer just one page out of the law book here to everybody, 'cause I did a little research here. If you take my passion, but this is out of eighteen A dash two dash twelve of the state code, and, um, if you look at the highlighted part there under G, no person may evaluate professional personnel for the purpose of this section unless the person has an administrative certificate issued by the State's Department of Schools and has successfully completed education and training and evaluation to the Center for Professional Development. And then it goes down there, talks about nineteen ninety-four. And with Doug Smith was here, and obviously Doug is an excellent special ed director, but the, and I'm kind of familiar with that because the, this law wasn't in existence. Uh, at that time, administrators went to training that was held throughout the state, had completed that training, then they were permitted to evaluate people. That's the way it was done. But as you can see, the law made it clear when it was passed here that in order to evaluate people, you must have an administrative degree. And, uh, once again, the special education director has professional personnel that work under them, and they need to evaluate them. And the only way they could do that is by having an administrative degree. So personally, I feel like the law requires not that that be preferred, but it's required.
Well, and, you know, I'd like to expand on that a little bit. Um, we, we are allowed to have directors, uh, take the class for, um, evaluation, and they are allowed to evaluate, uh, excuse me, service or professional. And with preferred, you know, as, as you said...
You tell me they're allowed to do that? Are you telling me there's something that circumvents this law, the law's been revised, or what?
Well, we are allowed to, uh...
By whom? Well, the West Virginia law, I just made the copy for everyone here, and I, I feel that this law is, is correct in what it's saying.
And, Mr. Priestley, that absolutely does not bother me one bit. If you all want that to be required...
I don't know what everybody else wants. I'm telling you what I want.
If that's, if that's the board's desire, that is, you know, that's perfectly fine.
Well, I want to abide by the law, but, you know, we, we were required to abide by state laws, federal laws, state court of education policies. And once again, the state, the law in West Virginia requires an administrative certificate for this position. Now, I understand that in the past, there may have been people who had that, and I don't know if they did or not, or did not have the administrative degree or certificate. But I can tell you by looking at that code there, that it's very clear to me, and Brad is a lawyer, he can make, give us an, his only two cents on, I know I'm just giving it to him.
And I, you know, not, not to disagree with you, but if that's the board's preference, that's perfectly, I, I'm so very much agreeable with that. That's not, but we do, you know, as Mr. Brunnie and I've talked, I, we think one of the, uh, important parts as well, you know, if you all want an administrative degree that, you know, required, that's perfectly fine, but I think they need to have a good background knowledge of special education. You can't just come into a position, or I feel it's very, uh, it's a very important position. Mr. Brunnie, would you like to, to, to expand on that?
Not this time, Mr. Brunnie. Uh, I'll give you a, I'll give you a second. I, and I agree with it, and if, if we look at the qualifications, I certainly don't disagree with that at all. Endorsement in special ed preferred, that's fine. I mean, obviously that's true. A minimum of so many years in special education, I agree wholeheartedly. Uh, having administrative, um, experience would be great. Uh, all of these things, experiencing grant writing and a background of five oh four, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you on all of those things. Uh, some of those may be preferred or, or required, but, um, I don't know of anything that requires any of those, but there's certainly things that should be in there. Um, I do want to ask Mr. Mick if, I think he oversees the interview process, yes, for the lack of that term. When, I was curious, on these six qualifications here, when you're two weeks, do they like grant or provide points or some kind of scoring system for, you know, if I have number one, do I get ten points? Do I get number two, do I get ten points? How does that work?
The committee itself doesn't look at the scoring system so much as much. We just go ahead and we have the interviews and we discuss the qualities about each of those applicants.
Well, that's all I'm saying on, Mr. Mick. I mean, and I don't know the reason I'm asking, 'cause I don't know, but I, you know, I would have, if I was doing that and I'm doing it independently, we're all doing it, I want to kind of rate somebody in my own mind. Um, if they've got, if they meet the first criteria, I'm gonna kind of give them so many points in there. And if they, you know, so I would know if somebody met all six of those, I think that'd be very good, you know, and I just wasn't sure how you all did it. So you'd kind of do it more informally.
Yes.
Okay. All right, but the only two things that I, once again, uh, I've looked at this, the only two things that I would differ on, and I'm just speaking for myself, now, the board here, as they speak for themselves, is what I would want the administrative degree required, strike the word preferred, and I would want one of the major duties and responsibilities to incorporate that they evaluate their personnel. Uh, I can't see anything in here that, that states that. It says they conduct ongoing program evaluations, but I see none of the, the criteria that are stated here stating that one of the duties of this director is to evaluate their people. And I think that needs to be added there. So those are the only two additions that I would, changes, I guess, that I would personally say. And once again, I know many of you haven't seen what I'm giving.
Here, please, uh, Beck, I'm sorry.
See, it's evaluation of the program, but there's nothing here that says that the director should, uh, evaluate personnel, so that's my, that's my two cents.
And that's for Chris.
Yes.
Number two, there, I, I think that should be required, preferred, the board can place lead.
I'll agree with that.
I mean, if you place lead, that takes place of person, in my opinion.
Don't disagree with that.
What kind of bullet candidates do you have, though, that have an endorsement in special
There were several of the applicants that we interviewed thus far. We interviewed six in county applicants last week. Some of those applicants did have a endorsement of special education.
But I don't think there's any at the two billion that we all...
All six criteria, right, okay. But some may have, I think, I don't, I don't disagree with what Ms. Curry said, some may have greater, uh, weight than others, I guess. A person could be, have an administrative degree, uh, have a background in special education, but maybe they haven't completed, uh, successful grant writing. So, uh, to require those and have the other one as preferred criteria would make sense to me. So I, I don't disagree with what Ms. Curry said at all.
Well, I guess, when I look, then, if we're looking at that, and if we're looking at the minimum number of years of administration, you know, that, uh, should we just, like, I want to say no to change on that one?
Oh, I don't know, but...
Because here, this one says a minimum of three years administrative experience preferred, you know, would, would we just like prefer, you know, I'm, I'm open to do, to go with each one of them, to make a, you know, even require the preferred.
Well, we're just getting everybody's in, but...
So, so the first one would be required, right?
I think so. I mean, I feel like I speak.
And the second one, Mr., um...
Is there consensus that number two be required?
That's the way I feel, huh?
Okay, all right, now, Chris brought up a, a point here, you know, let's just see what we think. What about number three? Do you think a, that person, uh, had, should have a minimum of three to five years, today have taught special education, I guess, the bottom line here, and that many years? I can't argue that.
Because they may have an endorsement, but they may not have utilized that endorsement, they may not have taught, uh, you know...
But that doesn't mean it wouldn't have been a good idea that they had.
Right.
Right, I understand, I mean, I can see that. Well, I try to think of in other areas other than this, that we may hire employees in. Do, do we look at that? You know, do we want administrators, whatever they may be, to have, um, experiences of, do we want a principal to have been a teacher, uh, or, you know, have the experience in that before they become a principal? I mean, most I know that imagine that, so...
And then the minimum of three years administrative experience, preferred. Do we still look at that as preferred, or is that a, you know, I'm, I'm...
Well, I'd say preferred on that one.
Okay, let's just go down. Let's look at number three, the next one that Chris mentioned there, 'cause I, the three years, three to five years teaching experience, you all, what's the consensus? Just, do you think it should be preferred or required?
Preferred.
Okay, you have a thought, sure, preferred.
Preferred.
Okay, so, everybody seems to think, uh, number three would be preferred. Okay, number four, a minimum of three to, three years administrative experience, preferred or required?
Preferred.
Preferred.
Okay, preferred on that. Uh, successful experience in grant writing for special ed programs, preferred or required?
Preferred.
Preferred, then, you guys?
Definitely preferred.
Definitely preferred, strong preferred. Okay, preferred on that one. And then number six, a background knowledge of five oh four, American Disabilities Act. Would that be a preferred or required, I think?
I think it's a lot.
That girl thinks required on that one?
Well, you can, uh, I'm, I'm, they have some knowledge, but I'm not saying that they have to have some knowledge in that.
Well, I don't want background knowledge, so that's, that's the word.
I don't want that.
Well, just an understanding. I, I think it's just a, that's the way I look at that, is an understanding of what, um...
If they had a general knowledge of five oh four, I could understand that more than the back, background almost implies to me that they've done it before.
And they've worked in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, background knowledge, it doesn't say background.
Well, as a teacher, some background knowledge would be if you have had a student that was on a five oh four plan, and if you've been involved in, in helping prepare or, uh, implement a five oh four plan, you have some knowledge because you've been part of developing a five oh four plan.
Well, listen, Mr. Mick, if you, you guys are the ones to sit down and, and interview people, how would you interpret that? Or would you have a suggestion?
Well, I like the word, the verb, the general knowledge, someone that has an understanding of the following process, is one that works.
So when you were going through the interview process, that would be easier for you all to deal with?
Right.
What do you all think about the use in general rather than background?
Wouldn't necessarily have to get a person that, that behaved or able to have the five oh four, and at least had...
Know what it is. All right, does everybody feel comfortable with general? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's change back, uh, general on, uh, the background knowledge.
The, the general knowledge.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what they require?
Well, that they, it'd be, that's a good question. Okay, now, wait, please, now, this has been brought up a question. General knowledge of section five oh four, American Disabilities, I prefer. Now, is that Jeff, if we're all doing that, would that, you would, you understand how they interpret that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, preferred on that.
Preferred.
All right, so we've looked at, uh, number one, the administrative degree, period. Two, well...
I was wanting to put the word required.
We could put required, okay. And make it more clear.
Because that, that, I was gonna say that, remove any bounds.
Okay, Mr. Ed, it is required. Uh, endorsement in special education, required? Required on that one also. Okay, a minimum of three to five years teaching experience in special education preferred, a minimum of three years administrative experience preferred, successful experience in grant writing for special education programs, special programs, uh, preferred, and general knowledge of section five oh four, Americans with Disabilities Act, preferred, or general knowledge of, get all that in about. Okay. Now, once again, the only other thing that I would, wanted to add would be something under the duties, or major duties and responsibilities, that we add maybe number, take thirty, add thirty-two, and then make thirty-two, thirty-three, 'cause I think that one probably should be last, other duties assigned by the superintendent or assistant, that we have something there about evaluating personnel. Can you come up with something, Mr. Mick, if...
If what, if, if you come up with some word, and then we all could...
Well, I was gonna, I was, yeah, that's, I'm, that's why I'm putting, putting him on the spot here.
That way.
Jeff, you think about that for a second. Okay, Ms. Brunnie, you've, you've got right up here in the front row. Wait this a minute. Number twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one, it is, yeah, it's a...
Okay, wait a minute, maybe it is. I've got it highlighted or something. Evaluates district's special education staff, well, staffing, and makes recommendations for transfers. See, I see that as two different things.
You see that as being hiring, as opposed to day-to-day performance?
Right.
So why not?
Conducts evaluation of special education staff. I could just, I mean, can we just...
Right, 'cause I looked at that, and that's the reason I highlighted it, Brad, because when I read it, I thought that might, but the more I read it, I don't really think that's what it means. Jeff, give us some words here.
Conducts evaluation of special education personnel.
Conducts evaluations of special...
Professional and service within the office, you know, because you do have the, I think that needs to be stated professionally.
Conducts evaluation of special education professionals and services.
Within the special education office.
I'll let you say it then, so. Conducts evaluation of...
Special education professional and service personnel within the special education office.
Say it one more time, Brandon, please.
Conducts evaluations of profession, of special education, professional and service personnel.
Okay.
Within the special education office.
Okay, good. See, I know Brandon knows that shorthand stuff, so... Bless your face, you're gonna have to block, blocks. Okay, now, if you might have any other suggestions?
I have something to say before.
Okay, we're gonna let you talk then.
Whether it be preferred, required, um, I just want everybody to be aware that, um, this was written, we had our job description in nineteen ninety-five, state took over in two thousand, state didn't care whether it was preferred, required, they didn't care about us, their, uh, state appointed superintendents didn't care, they did whatever they pleased. And I think we're a little bit rough on the trish by kind of like throwing this in here now. I know it's something we need to discuss, but I don't think she's really had time to undo what the state has done to us, and they have done to us.
And I don't disagree with it, and we mentioned that earlier, that some of the ones that she cited here were, understated the problem, and, uh, that's the reason I met with, with this, with Ms. Mick, a couple of weeks ago, talking about this very day, and I asked him to produce some research and try to find what the last board approval was, because once again, um, the jobs that are posted should coincide with jobs that should be given before a five oh percent, or exactly, the state really isn't following it, or didn't have to, I guess, but I think we have to. So if we find areas where we feel maybe they were a little bit negligent, uh, then we need to try to break that if we can. And we've talked about this, so this is, that's the reason they've done some research at my request, and I thank them for that.
And, and I told Mr. Priestley that I, you know, I, you get these and share them with people, as you all have these here, I brought copies, um, that, and neither of these had I developed, uh, and we just tried to, um, actually, when, when someone brought my attention that before, that it had, uh, preferred on them, and so, uh, we did go back and, and looked at all of the ones that had been, uh, posted previously. So, uh, that's what Brock is about, but, you know, absolutely have no problem with you all, making the recommendations and, and, uh...
Well, I think everybody needs to have a little history of, especially those...
The goal is for us all to have input and come up with the best product that we can.
Exactly. Mr. Brunnie, you have some bullets, sir. You want to say something to us?
Well, I just think that, I, I'd have to disagree with you on the required for administrative limiting our...
Even though the law requires that.
Well, as Ms. Lewis was wanting to tell you, um, that I guess there's a class, correct me if I'm wrong, that people can take to be able to evaluate.
I'll let you have this copy.
Sir, I have that, thank you.
But once again, I, when I read this, Jeremy, I don't read anything in there that says keep that class in lieu of this.
I'm just letting you know that people can take class and be able to evaluate.
Unless I can see that, they are circumventing the state law.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Rachel, Jeremy. If I read further down in this law that Steve's provided to everyone, it talks about, it has an and provision, not an or provision, says you have to have administrative, an administrative certificate, and have successfully completed education and training and evaluation skills to the Center for Professional Development or equivalent education training approved by the state board. Is that the training you want to talk about that allows people to evaluate? Well, I, okay, let me just make an observation. It has an and, not an or. Now, in practice, thi- this may be ignored in practice, it may be the practice of every board in this state to allow, um, evaluation with this training without an administrative certificate, but this is the first time I've read it, I absolutely agree with Steve's interpretation. It says and, not or. Not and/or, not or, it says and, so you have to have that and this training it talks about. But it's maybe something everybody ignores, Steve's not ignoring it. We can't ignore it, it's the law, we have to follow the law. So, I mean, I, my concern as well, when I asked about the later criteria, it doesn't limit the four candidates, and it may, but we can't knowingly violate the law just because everyone else does. Had Steve not brought it up, had he not found this, maybe our options would have been different, but I feel like our hands are tied unless there's someone somewhere that says, that's not really what that means, it's an official interpretation. I mean, you understand our position?
I do, I just, I guess my question would be then, if, if there's a class that allows people to do that, I don't know why this is being said the way it is, if people are required to take this class so they can evaluate who aren't administrators. You see what I'm saying? That's my concern.
And, and I, I have, I have no disagreement that, that what happens in practice may not comply with what the law requires, but what we would need, what I would need, and I guess everyone else would need, is some kind of official proclamation that despite the law saying this, we allow you to do, the law says actually allow you to do what?
And, and maybe later, if you have another position, you know, to come out, but I'm perfectly good, you know, with this job description.
I just want the best person, um, who knows special ed and can advocate for our kids and do the best job they can, that's all I'm asking.
But do you know anyone that's taken this class that's not administrative, that evaluates
That's a five, or, I mean, what are you asking? I'm sorry.
I'm asking, do you know anyone in our school system that's taken this class that you're talking about? That's evaluating people, is that a non-administrative?
Yes, sir.
And we'd have them in the fifth.
Yes, sir.
That, you need...
We could talk about that at a different time.
Well, I was gonna say, you need to share that with the superintendent, and then she needs to go back and, and try to see if maybe that needs to be addressed, 'cause that's a separate issue in...
Yeah, that sounds good.
But we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you allowing us to speak.
Okay, okay. Anything else on this job description, please, John? Okay, I, one, one question, I'll remember, see, or let her see, revised salary schedule seventeen? Exactly. What, what's the revision there?
That's the, to include the Association of Great Specializations, that's all that is.
This, this is the one for the speech, uh, here, uh, on, uh, quarter five. So I hope to do the match after the record speech there, just, so we may get, uh, have the correct, correct order of which.
Okay, so does it also include what Jeff said, or are we gonna need all that? Okay. All right. Okay, so this, this... Okay, so this is the topic of this case, we go on national board certification of the, uh, I guess, is it just the speech pathologists or other?
It was just the speech pathologists. We have it for the national board certified teachers, but, uh, with new language for the speech pathologists.
Okay, good. Okay, that's only questions I have.
It was clear, but it was not in front. Our front was, it was like...
This is, makes it clear. Fred. Good.
I have a question on the special education job descriptions. Is it re-co-expected position?
Well, I, that was what I, it, it seems to me at this point, we've, uh, the first one we put out was, would be, oh, we're, because we abolished it.
Right.
The second we put out doesn't coincide with this, so it seems to me like we have to put out a new, uh, posting that coincides with this job.
No.
Is that, I can't believe it.
And I would make the act as where that's possible, the job description is required.
Okay. And you will, you go ahead and get a hold of anybody that it's been reposted. Will you agree?
Yes. Let's just add, let's add the program repost position, so it's clear, someone outrun, we're looking at the history.
That's a good point, Brenda. Okay, so, the adoption of a revised job description, special education inspection, what do you want to have, please?
Repost the position.
Approval to repost the position.
Immediately.
Immediate. Okay. E now reads, the adoption of revised job description for special education directive affects immediately, and approval to repost, well, don't need that first immediately, and approval to repost the position immediately. Okay? Everybody get on that? All right.
Well, you have to remove the fact. You want to remove that first immediately, you have to remove the fact.
Okay, let's see. The brief notice, the adoption of revised job description for special education directive, approval, repost the position immediately. Yes, all right. We removed the word, okay, and put immediately back at the end. Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions about, if not, we're called for questions. Is there an all yes vote, as revised? Yes.
Yes.
All yes. All right, let's go to the finance section, have a motion, please.
Come in.
Mr. Baker, second?
No, sir.
I think Mr. Curry snuck in there, honestly. Okay.
Item A is scheduled in voice, is totaling nine hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, see the attachment. Item B is purchase of field turf from Western Union Turf, totaling seventy-three thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars to be installed on the Lincoln High School Softball Field. Item C is purchase of limestone from GL Stone, is totaling ten thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and nine cents for the LCHS Softball Field Turf Project. And item D is purchase lumber and grain pipe from Branch Lumber, is totaling one thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars eighty-six cents for the LCHS Softball Field Turf Project.
Okay, now, all that money we're spending there, where's it coming from?
We need, I will say yours.
Mr. Priestley? Mr. Wilson?
I checked with our treasurer this week, and I was curious about this, wondering whether the board would be providing any funds for that. I've been made, uh, I was insured, in other words, that all this money came basically from donations, and I thought it was really nice, they, I understand that after this is expended, they will have two hundred and some dollars left over, so, somebody's did an awful lot of work here securing funds from the public, so, this doesn't involve any board funds at all.
So, no board funds, this is all grants for donations? Is that what you're going to say?
That's what our treasurer...
Isn't this one of the first projects that we said needed to be ran by us, even though we were spending no funds, just so we knew what was going on with the bank for things?
Yes.
Yeah, I think this, this was the project that caused us to say, from now on, you gotta let us know.
Well, also, because of the, the amount, uh, we had to follow the procedure of just, um, bidding and looking at the lowest bids, and they have secured all of the documentation, and I have it here, you all need to look at it at all.
Because that, some of them may vary based on the amounts, don't they? I mean, the requirements?
Yes.
Okay, so, but you looked over those, and you feel that each one of those, whatever the requirements may be for that given amount of funds has been met?
I met with Ms. Candy and Mr. Davis Smith, and, uh, Mr. Hoover had brought this to me, uh, and we looked through everything yesterday, and just, uh, made sure that we met every, uh, quarter.
Okay, good.
And here's the documentation, in case you want me to see it.
Now, if you all looked that closely, because, you know, we had an issue with some bids before, we will make sure we read all that.
That's exactly why I said I don't want to go through that.
Good. Neither will.
Talk to me off.
Somebody did. We're not looking at you.
No. Did, did not even say anything, but it's true.
Okay. Any, any other questions, Doc? I'm glad that, that Mr. Wilson called and spoke to him, and what he says seems to coincide with what, uh, Ms. Lippes said, so, it's good to know. Okay. No further questions on finance, we'll call for questions on that, then all yes vote. Yes. Okay. Personnel, question, please. Mr. Smith?
Second.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Lippes.
Okay. Section A is the employment of professional personnel. Section B is the employment of extracurricular athletic personnel. Section C is for leave of absence. Section D is for resignation and or retirement, and it's noted under the effective date as to whether it's resignation or retirement. Now, under section A, where it says effective date, uh, Mr. Mathis would be November the twentieth, uh, we need for that to say, uh, upon release from, uh, Tyler County, and that will be...
So, we go straight there, the twentieth?
Yes.
So, upon release of Tyler County?
Yes.
From, from Tyler County.
Upon release from Tyler County.
Yes.
So, you think it's going to be safe?
Yes.
And he probably doesn't want to resign until he gets a job.
You're right.
A good move.
Well, actually, I think you might have to do it on your side.
Probably won't.
Yes, can be Tyler County.
They wrote theirs, so they have to, okay, good. All right, anybody have any questions on personnel section? Okay, all, like, all questions, that and all yes vote?
Yes.
All yes on that. Okay, let's go then to comments and concerns. Uh, I'd asked for this to be placed on the agenda here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, if you all know, we advertised for another maintenance employee. I get confused, I think there were two or three, I thought there were three applicants?
There were originally four.
Okay. But anyway, what's happened, we've had two applicants that have not met the requirements.
We had two regular employees, one, uh, that applied, one withdrew their bid, the other one did not pass the test. Uh, we had two substitute employees that, uh, applied, one withdrew their bid, the other one started to dance, but didn't pass.
Because my, what I was thinking, and just, and I didn't know there was this other person at the time, is that if we didn't have qualified individuals for this job, knowing that our, we have an enrollment decline, and there's a strong possibility that comes springtime, we're going to have to decrease employees again, that we might want to consider this not still in this position. But it seems like now we still have a person that could technically still qualify, so maybe it's a little bit premature. But should that person not qualify, then I think we want to revisit this again, if we want to, you know, in other words, if we want to repost it and try to do it again, and we may end up having that person anyway, and we can't find anybody qualified. Do you might have any comments about that whole issue?
Well, I just, I don't understand how we're letting go, floating out, hard some more, because you're supposed to hire a, a service personnel within twenty days. This has been fifty.
Well, Fred, that was because the first person, you know, taking the test ended up, um, not passing the, uh, certain components. The second person, we had it scheduled for them to take it, they, uh, withdrew. The third person, we had them scheduled, there was a death in their family, and the person that gives the test is not a full-time employee, and we work around their schedule sometimes as well.
Well, I think we should consider getting them all tested, everybody applies.
At the same time.
Same time.
And that's, that's, uh...
Because it's not going to cost us anymore, because she gets face of death.
Right. Yeah.
For the test.
And a lot of times we do, this one just, it didn't work out that way.
But how, how you get by the law standard within twenty days?
Well, we didn't have a vacancy, this was, this was not, we're not refilling one. Yes, I, I checked that out to make sure, because if someone had vacated a position, this wasn't a vacated position. So, the timeline is...
But I'm, Brownie and I were having a little private conversation about this, uh, understanding that there could be numerous applicants, but at the same time, if the law requires you to hire somebody within twenty working days, how do you do it? Because that's, Brownie said, well, wouldn't it be expensive to test all these people? We were just saying in our private conversation, that'd be true, or I was saying, but at the same time, the law's the law, uh, and it might even mandate that you test everybody just in case, and that way, if none of, you know, the first person qualifies, then you can hire somebody easily within twenty days. But if not, you've at least tested everybody, like what Fred's saying, and then if somebody does, then you can hire them within what the law requires.
Well, what I was saying about that, this particular situation is not a vacancy, I mean, if this is a new position at that particular timeline, that...
Well, but the law says, when the, after the, twenty days after the posting ends.
It doesn't say a vacancy, or, I mean, a...
Yeah, when I asked, they said that this one, it's a new position.
Who did you ask?
Your company.
Well, we need to look at the law.
Leslie, I'll, I'll have her to check.
Check it, but I'll tell you what it says. It says, uh, twenty days after posting ends, uh, twenty working days after the end of the posting, and professionals, thirty days after the end of the posting. So, whether it be a new position or one that's being, uh, built, it's still a specific number of days that has to be built. Okay, I think Mr. Curry made his point. Uh, once again, this person will be tested maybe soon?
Well, they, they started it today.
Okay.